Yep, and we're on live. Good. Okay, we're gonna open the afternoon session at 1:16. Today is August 19th. This is the special meeting with the Jagga County Budget Commission. Next one up is Newberry Township. Tammy, would you start out with the numbers?
Newberry Township submitted their 2025 budget with an estimated beginning balance in their general fund of $573,106.95. They're requesting revenue in the amount of $653,376. The commission will consider $653,896. Estimated expenses of $974,536.75 within any cash balance of $252,466.20. Road and bridge, beginning balance of $178,906.6. Revenue requested at $395,887, which the Budget Commission will consider. Estimated expenses of $542,000 with an ending balance of $32,787.6. Fire fund, beginning balance of $335,802.29, requesting revenue in the amount of $1,223,513. The commission will consider $1,213,578. Estimated expenses of $1,002.97, estimated ending balance of $252,380.29. Road Improvement Fund has beginning estimated balance of $76,158.23. Revenue requested at $695,803, which will be considered. Estimated expenses of $711,600 with an ending balance of $60,361.23. The debt fund has beginning estimated balance of $500,673.30. Requesting revenue in the amount of $386,638, which will be considered. Estimated expenses of $886,611, leaving an ending balance of $94.30. Total milage for 24, 25, 1.4 inside general, 1.6 inside road and bridge, 3.9 outside road and bridge, 7.1 outside fire, for a total of 14 mils, and there are no levies on the ballot for no debt.
I'd be happy to.
We're gonna make Krabby go last, but go ahead.
If you would look at the...
Blue and black sheet?
Yeah, blue and black sheet.
You can call and get the red sheet, nobody knew what he was talking about. Cause yours is red.
My version is see it red.
Page two.
Page two.
Mike, if you look at the general fund for the cash, actual cash balance of 2023, you have $874,000 in cash. That's enough to operate the township in your general fund for about a year and a half without a single dollar of tax revenue. That's a bit high by a factor of a full year of funding. If we go down to the road and bridge fund, we have the same problem. Your actual cash balances, money in the bank, is $439,012.31.23. That's enough to operate for over a year and a half. And that number has been going up for the past one, two, three, four years. That, I believe, is a trend. Then we go to the fire fund. Oh, look, same problem. You estimated you would have $251,000 at the end of 2023, and you actually had $1.4 million. That's enough to operate the entire department for over a year and a half. That is unacceptable. You know, budgets are something that are a guide. You should be within, I don't know, maybe 25% of an actual budget number. Being off factorily and having so much excess cash is a... It's an embarrassment of riches, which Newberry has, because you have an inordinate amount of cash. It belongs to the taxpayers, not you. That's where it comes from. And if you're gonna sit on it, it's gotta go back to the tax. That's my, my two cents. I have nothing further.
Guy addressed the road and bridge.
Yeah.
We're paving Peak and Road this year, which is in excess of $1,350,000. So it's costing us eight or $900,000 for a Peak and Road project. So that's triple of what we normally do. Normally, we, 300, 350, we're gonna, we're gonna be at 900. So that will take, I know it's wrong in the budget, but that money needs to be used up. Fire personnel, so just let's go back.
Okay, so, so you're saying the budget figure here is wrong? It should actually be $900,000?
No, no, we're, we're going to use $900,000 for Peak and Road. Between what we had carried over from last year and our budget for this year, we put all into one large road project.
But that's the wonderful thing about the budget that you're submitting. It should have that in there.
Some of it, some of it is. My, my cash balances are showing lower in the future because of that. I think you were referring to the 2023.
Right, and the 24.
Right, I'm looking at the end of 2025, so there's two more years of expenditures that I'm taking into consideration.
And then that goes back to the, the question we've been talking about all morning. You indicate in the road and bridge fund, you'll have an ending cash balance for 2025 of $32,000. You probably need at least 100 grand a quarter to operate the road department. You don't have money to pay your people.
Well, you have road and bridge and then the road improvement fund.
Which has another 16 at the end of 25.
And you've got permissives, gas tax, and...
MBL.
MBL.
How much of, uh, Peak and is gonna be on your dime?
Around 800.
Eight hundred something thousand dollars, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I thought you said you were done.
And then the fire department. Slow go from last year. They didn't start construction until July of 2023, 22. Nonetheless, we just completed the station and hired firefighters. So we have six employees now. So we discussed it at last week's meeting, we now have to pay the firefighters. So more of that money, was there four full-time?
Um...
Four full-time and two part-time. I believe the number was three, almost $400,000 that we have to forward now.
People who aren't talking are holding up three fingers, so that must be three.
But then you've also...
Four and three.
Four and three. I didn't get the code, but I got the three.
And we also have an expectation, I think Penn said three more part-time to be hired, and three, sorry, two and two maybe on the books to be hired in September.
So we start paying them August 10th, I believe was the first group hired. There'll be another group, and then we have to run it until next March, when we receive, which we have the money together. We're, we're good there. But it did, it did get spent down as fast as we anticipated, but we'll have a better feel now that we have firefighters, we're, we're working.
Well, and furthermore, it was right before the budget submission, so I actually emailed the ladies back there to see like, because this is different than what we knew, and obviously I just started in April, so it's all been new to me. But we're actually voting on a resolution this week to pull an additional 400 out of reserves.
So, we all, we all come at this from a different angle, right? I, I come at it from looking at your submission and seeing, is your submission reasonable? And is it justifying? Those are my tests. And I look at your ending balances at the end of your budget term. Are those reasonable ending balances? You know, each of us comes at it, I think, from a different angle, which is healthy, because I think we're getting it covered from all bases then. So I, I test some of the mechanics of your budget. Your mechanics were outstanding. All of your transfers matched for both years, both current year and future year. Your carryovers, at least what you're predicting, if anything, road and bridge would appear to be low at the end of your... Now, that may change based on how the actual numbers of these projects come out, right? Cause you tend to appropriate, you have to appropriate 110% of the project cost. If they come in below 110%, you, that comes out to be cash carryover, and then people get all excited because you didn't predict it. But you can't, because you have to appropriate it. I'm assuming you're appropriating 100% of your, your cost of health insurance for the whole year, even though they come in lower at the end. There's all kinds of things that happen. So if you look at your, your carryovers, general fund is sitting at 30%. I mean, that's the sweet spot. That's perfect. All of your road-related funds coming in at 13%, if anything, that's a little low, but, as you said, that may be altered with carryover that you didn't predict. Fire, you're right, at 25%. Now, this devoids every, all the capital. There's no capital included, so I'm not talking about the building construction. I mean, my only question, and what I want to say is, the readability of this budget is the best I've seen from Newberry since I've been auditor. The read, I could, I could read this and completely understand where you're going. My only question was, and I know in the past you have suppressed some of the levy money that was going to the fire station, but, cause you, but now you weren't sure what, you have to wrap that project up. You know, that's a huge levy nut for taxpayers. I think no one's gonna deny it. It's, it's a big levy. And, and the question is, where are you going with that? What, what is the long-term vision of, of that levy collection? And are, you know, I'd like to know, are you planning on like a year-to-year review? And then forecast what you need, and then, but, but that, what I'm gonna suggest though is you consider a reserve fund, because what I don't want you to do is to collect levy money, review it, consider you have too much at that moment in time, because I, I know what happens. You get prudent, and you say, we can give this much back, and then lo and behold, somebody says, I need a new fire truck, and nobody said it before? And you go, where did that come from? And now you're stuck holding the bag because you gave back money that you shouldn't have given back. If you put it in a reserve, you're, you're giving back after you've saved for current expenses and for future expenses, which I think is prudent. You, you don't want to do it the other way, because then you're going back and clawing money back, and you don't want to do that.
We did just have a contract with, is it Miller Dodson?
Miller Dodson.
To do a reserve.
On, on the...
On the fire.
On the station itself?
Yeah, the new addition and everything.
So they're gonna look at the roof, the brickwork, the concrete, all of the assets, and then they're gonna give you, they're gonna give you a number to put away.
Right, so we're expecting to have a reserve fund going forward.
Okay, good. That, that's what I, that's my only thing that I wanted to satisfy. You know, your road expenditures, I think, over time have done this, because that's what roads do. You know, you think you're gonna do a project, it gets delayed, so you accumulate too much money, then you gotta spend a whole bunch of money. You could do the same with road equipment that will help level that. So if you start putting away a little bit for trucks, for example, and then there's a truck purchase, well, you don't have to worry about not paying as much, because you can dip into the reserves, pull that money, buy your truck, and then slowly you're paying that back. So I, I would, I mean, and we, we can give you help with that, setting it up. We've got some pretty cookbook approaches. Jim Flay's office has prepared like a sample template. It's, you could have it done in no time if you wanted to do that.
Okay.
Okay, but you're gonna need, get, you're need to get those numbers, obviously, from Miller Dodson.
Yeah.
The, as far as capital equipment is concerned, your, your road people and your fire people have to tell you what the costs are of those. They know what a engine costs, what a tanker costs, they know what a plow truck costs, and you just plug those in, and, you know, if it's 12-year life, divided by 12, and say we're gonna save now for a truck in 12 years, if you're gonna do it in six, you gotta double the amount. It's just simple math. So I would encourage you to do that, and the sooner you do that, the sooner he stops quizzing you on why it's doing this.
Well, the other thing about the fire you asked was, were we gonna reevaluate it year to year? And you mentioned about the contract, the current contract being through March. So the expectation is now that we have, will have, a year, a year under our belts of the activity with the new hires, it'll be more like six months, but, well, they'll know better what they're gonna need, and we'll know better what we want to...
We also withheld 0.65 mils of the fire levy to offset the increase in property tax.
For inside mils, yeah.
And we're gonna review that as it comes up.
I encourage you to do that. And, but I get you, you have to pay that building off first. You gotta get that done, right? But, you know, there, I don't want people to forget that there was a giant windfall, and we're trying to help taxpayers get used to that windfall. Being that you're now in West G, they also got a floor adjustment. So, you know, they got an additional 4 million? 5 million? 5 million floor adjustment. So, I mean, a lot of tax, and, you know, they're not giving it back, so we're gonna have to try to do our best to offset that cost. That's, that's all I have.
True motion, Chuck.
You didn't say anything.
Yeah, that was good.
Okay. So he did say something. I'll, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Do you have anybody whose property was damaged?
No.
No?
I voted no.
Okay. If you had anybody who, whose property was damaged and with the storms recently, they can file for a reduction of property tax based on whatever was damaged with their structure. You, you may want to keep that, in case a resident comes in and says, hey, a tree fell on my house, and, you know, you can't claim the tree, you can claim the structure, and it's a one-year, 50%, because it's when the storm occurred. So when you put the date on there, make sure you tell them, it's not when you're filing it, it's when did the storm happen? And then it's a 50% valuation change, but only for one year. If they want more than one year, they gotta go to the VR to get that reduced, okay?
Okeydoke.
And...
Okay.
You just have to say no so loud. You could have just said...
I wanted to make sure you knew.
Okeydoke. Yes, okay.
This is, this is, this is for your temporary appropriations that you need.
Okay.
So don't, I know you're new, I probably know what those are, but don't use those until you get your temporarys. A lot of people start using those, and they get their two years next month.
Surely, I wouldn't do that.
Hey, it's like, we're just starting in April.
You're getting phenomenal.
Yeah, phenomenal. Really good.
I have an accounting background, but just not government.
Yeah, well, that, you have to unmark it.
I know. I know, I was like, where's the balance sheet?
There is no balance sheet. We don't do that. No, you're doing really well.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thanks for coming in.
All right, thank you.
If you need anything on the reserves, just ask Kristen or Tammy. We've got packages we can give you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
The 22, on my budget, it's 11.
No, see, see, I said this.
Should be 84, yeah.
Sounds good.
If you look, what you... Because it's broken out.
They needed that.
Okay, next up is Huntsburg. It is 1:34. We're gonna open the hearing for Huntsburg Township. Tammy, would you start out with the numbers, please?
Sure. Huntsburg Township submitted their 2025 budget with a beginning cash balance in their general fund of $91,953.47. They requested revenue in the amount of $378,823. The Budget Commission will consider $365,357. Estimated expenses of $421,500 with an ending balance of $35,810.47. The road and bridge fund has beginning estimated balance of $203,917. I'm sorry, you guys don't have it.
There is.
Thank you. Revenue requested at $655,730. The Budget Commission will consider $613,436. Estimated expenses of $729,200 with an ending balance of $88,147.17. Fire fund, beginning cash balance estimated at $19,608.20. Requested revenue in the amount of $111,323, and the Budget Commission will consider $100,323. Estimated expenses of $122,500 with an ending cash balance of a negative $2,568.80. Total milage for 24, 25, 1.7 inside general, 1.3 inside road and bridge, 6 outside road and bridge, 1.5 outside fire, for a total of 10.5 mils. There is a renewal road and bridge levy on the ballot in November.
Right, now, under the fire fund, I did what I did on every budget, is when I took the percentage.
Like a walk-on?
No, um, and then the property tax allocation, you know, I broke that down, but apparently the tax allocation even come out at 95.
Oh, yeah, you added twice, because it's already on top, yeah. But, so we just, we just modified.
Uh, so, yeah, I modified the expenditure.
Yeah, we can change that on our sheets, right?
We did.
Okay.
We changed the revenue amount.
Yeah, so we, we kinda fixed it for you. You're gonna wanna throttle your expenditures though, because
Right.
you're gonna show a negative. It's not, you know, the world. You want me to go first, since I'm already talking?
Yes, that'd be very nice.
Would you, there you go. So the only thing I noticed in the budget mechanically is, you did a transfer from the, I think, the general fund into the permanent improvement fund, but in, in the permanent improvement fund, you didn't put it in as a transfer in, you put it in as other revenue.
Right.
You're gonna wanna fix that before you get audited, just because they're gonna wanna see the transfers matched. I, I think it's just, you just categorized the wrong one.
Okay.
It's in there, the numbers don't change. It's just in the wrong location.
Okay, yeah.
Does that make sense? I think you have it. If you look, it's in 2025, you have it up there.
I'm nervous. You want it down here?
Yeah, it's gotta be, because when they run your, when they try to reconcile your UAN, they're gonna see there's no equivalent transfer. They're gonna see it out, but no in, and they're gonna say you miscategorize it, and they'll put it in. Your, your percentage carryovers as of the end of December of '25 are actually low. It's a pretty hot budget. It's tight. 12% in the general fund, 60% in all of the road equivalent funds together, 7% in fire. I think you, you have a contract, right?
Yeah.
So you could be near zero, because you...
Our next, our, will be a levy next year for the fire, because the contract they wanna increase.
Okay.
And the current levy won't cover it.
So you don't have, is big a worry with carryover, because you don't, you don't have to carry them the first over, you just write your check for the contract amount. So, I mean, that's, I appreciate your notes. Those helped me a lot reading it. I have nothing further.
Notes were extremely important. Extremely important.
You mean my, my letter or my notes?
Your letter.
The letter, okay.
Otherwise, bye-bye.
Well, I know you voted no last year, because we didn't get a part of it.
I had a more carry.
Our courts covered, but now this year, the budget came in to recover, to have those courts and change one tennis court to two pickleball courts, $8,500.
Or is I working on a grant?
It's fine.
He's on a, he's on a boat, no streak, just signal.
Well, he did last year.
That's right, yeah, I appreciate that.
That was then. The only thing I would be concerned about, road and bridge, I think you need to be a little more honest about what the actual ending cash balance will be, because you need to pay your people.
Right?
You show you're only gonna have $130,000.
You'd also, I pay out a guest tax, salaries, kind of guest debts.
Okay, good.
Road and bridge. I have one, one from each fund. We have two employees, one from each one.
And then, same problem, same problem with the fire fund, the contract, vehicle equipment, right?
We have one truck in there that we gave them money towards, and I believe the contract says it will be ours if they go to front.
What about the other?
The ceiling.
That's the...
Um, yeah, any other equipment they got from us was through, used the COVID money. We got them extra masks.
Who owns title?
To the truck.
To all of the equipment that they have.
The only equipment they have up there is a truck, and it's in middle, it's in their hand.
How many did you, you paid for?
Well, we, I don't, I don't, that was a bit for me, and I think they paid partial, okay.
That was a 40.
In the contract, it is written, and we, I can always have Jim look at it, that we get the truck if Middlefield Volunteer, our Middlefield Fire Department now no longer exists. We get these trucks. It is an old...
That's a good thing.
Yeah, that, we made sure that was in there, because we gave them the down payment for the truck. And then we pay the contract every year, which covers all their expenses.
So who's, you consider dealing? Fire Department. Sounds like they're just gonna drop it off on the front lawn of town hall when they're done with it.
Basically, and it's just gonna stay in the building. Because I'm sure, we had them look at our contract. We all, I always do. I always send all the contracts to my, to Sheila. Before that, it was Becky, and before that, it was somebody else.
Yeah, I, the, the budget helped, the, the notes to your letter helped a lot. I mean, I don't like the variance of the road fund. I think that's partially explained by this, um, Zeroka drive.
They're doing that right now.
How much is that gonna cost?
Almost $900,000.
Okay.
And it's only three quarters of a mile, and it's already, they've done the cement stabilization, but it's already failed in two places, and they're in, Roniak's in there. They're having a fit with it, because it used to be a farmland, so irrigation, all the stuff they have in there, it's, yeah.
And I do expect, actually, I expect with this road project, I'm waiting for the, oh, you know what, we didn't plan on this in here, and it's gonna cost the township like $100,000 extra.
Well, can't go more than 10%, right?
Okay. That's not $100,000, so that's, that's what I am expecting that.
If they're redoing two concrete stabilizations, yeah, I would count on that.
So, yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna eat off that 10%.
But the engineer's office is working with them, and... What's the recommendation?
Okay, well, I would have had an issue with the road and bridge fund, but I think that's gonna solve that problem, so. So yes, this was very helpful, very well advised. It's, uh, Chris's.
I'm glad you liked it, thank you.
Second.
Yes.
All right.
Glad you liked it, because I probably shouldn't have sent it.
No, no, that would have been a huge...
If you have any studies that has property damage from the storm,
Oh.
they can file for a reduction of valuation for one year.
Oh, really?
Use that form, or you can send them to us, but you could give them that and say, hey, fill this out as of the date of the storm, and it's 50%, because it's based on the time, the date that it happened.
Oh, that was a nasty storm, that was, sure.
I don't know how many folks you had.
Uh, yeah, we can actually put that on our, on...
Yeah, what's that?
Let's say.
Yep, you don't mind, too, and we're, we're for your temporarys.
I did put on there what BMA, yeah. We've got information from Emergency Management Agency about whether state or anything happens.
So you have the, I have the thing, I have this stuff back.
Yeah, I have to go to the meeting.
I know, yes, but I like it in my...
Let's not fight.
See ya. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Well done.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay.
How was everybody?
Great. How are you guys?
Good.
Okay, we're gonna open the hearing, what's your hearing for Middlefield Township? Tammy, can you start out with the numbers?
Middlefield Township submitted their twenty twenty-five budget with an estimated beginning balance in their general fund of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand four thirty-five oh nine. They're requesting revenue in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand eight eighty-two. The Budget Commission will consider two hundred and sixty-one thousand three seventeen. Estimated expenses of two hundred and forty thousand eight forty-eight, leaving an ending cash balance of two hundred and seventeen thousand nine oh four oh nine. Road and Bridge Fund, beginning estimated balance of five hundred and forty-seven thousand seven twenty-seven forty-four. Requesting revenue in the amount of six hundred and twenty-two thousand one fifty-five, which will be considered. Estimated expenses of five hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and sixty cents. Ending balance of five hundred and ninety-five thousand one oh one eighty-four. Ambulance Fund, beginning estimated balance of eighty-eight thousand five sixty-six sixty-one. Requesting revenue in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven dollars, which will be considered. Estimated expenses of sixty-seven thousand eight thirty-three oh four. And an ending balance of a hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and fifty-seven cents. Total millage for twenty-four, twenty-five is one point three inside general, one point seven inside Road and Bridge. Five outside Road and Bridge, one point six outside ambulance for a total of nine point six, and there are no levies on the ballot for November.
Christian, is it first?
Sure. For the past many years, we, I focused on the ambulance fund. It continues to be a thorn in my side. And I'm trying to understand, you, you took a hundred thousand dollars and established a reserve fund in two thousand twenty-two. I guess that money is still there, because you haven't had to spend serious money. You have four hundred thousand dollars in cash as a twelve thirty-one twenty-three. That's enough to operate for over three and a half years. So what in the world is going on?
We just did an addition.
How much was that?
Was that in twenty-three or twenty-four?
Um, well, we finished it up in twenty-four.
Okay.
And that was like two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
And you paid for it out of the ambulance fund?
Um, the balance, the, some of it came from the ARPA, and then the balance came out of the ambulance fund. We also reduced millage on the ambulance fund to offset the
Inside millage.
Yeah. And we are considering doing that again for next year.
How much, do you know how much came from ARPA?
I don't have those numbers right offhand, I'm sorry.
I can look it up here, Jim. Um, you did that, well, I have that you, you expensed out in twenty twenty-three, three hundred, three hundred and sixteen thousand out of the ARPA fund. And then this year, you have budgeted a hundred and fifty-five thousand to come out of the ARPA.
And we spent all of that, and then the balance came out of the ambulance fund.
Thanks. So, give me a wild ass guess on how much cash the township has to put into the ambulance.
I would say it's probably two hundred thousand.
On the ambulance fund.
On the
So three hundred and eighty-five thousand total, but everything but two hundred was ARPA.
Out of this year, yes.
Out of this year, okay. So that suggests to me, your ending cash balance for this year, two thousand twenty-four, will be about two hundred brands less. That would be encouraged. I hope I am able to see that. Uh, I also have a concern about Road and Bridge, do you have some big projects happening this year?
We do, we have a, well, it's gonna be for twenty twenty-five, we have to have matching funds for a grant that we got through OPWC. And our estimated amount that we have to have is three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
As the match?
Yes.
And yet, for the ending cash balance, you, you think you're gonna have five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars? That, would that be after that?
No, that is before.
Okay. My concern is, you, you have an abundance of cash in the Road and Bridge Fund. Enough to operate for a year and two-thirds without any tax revenue. And your indication is now that you're gonna spend three hundred thousand of that in this year. No, in twenty-five.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Okay, that needs to happen.
Yeah, we just got approved, and they, we got the, um, email that they can go forward, Shane and them can go forward with getting a contractor.
It's on the schedule for twenty-five.
Good, you're gonna make sure your colleagues make it happen.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I had some of the same issues with the ambulance fund, but you've, I think you've explained that very well. Um, but your general fund numbers were very well done, as your, with your estimates and your actuals, I think you, you did really good budgeting there. It's kind of a goofy thing with the Road and Bridge. So you, in twenty-three, you had a estimated ending balance that was, that was pretty close, I thought you did a good job there, and then you had an estimated beginning balance in twenty-four that was five hundred thousand dollars off of that, so I'm trying to figure out what happened there, do you see that, Chuck?
Yeah.
Um, you see, like, you know, if you go to page, the second page.
Second page of your, of this. Shut this one.
It should
Oh, must be on that.
They don't always match, but the, um,
You got it?
Yeah, you go to Road and Bridge. So look at your estimated ending balance for twenty twenty-three. Seven oh four, which you did, which was great, compared to seven eighty-five, the actual, that, that's very good. But then, you did, your estimated beginning balance is two seventy-five. And then the actual beginning was the seven eighty-five, so that's gonna cause you a headache. When you're, you know what I mean, now it's gonna skew going forward.
Okay.
I mean, may, maybe you made up for it, because you have an estimated beginning balance of twenty-five of five forty-seven. I mean, I think that's probably pretty, gonna be pretty accurate based on what's going on this year.
If I remember correctly, last year's budget submission had a beginning balance error.
I have no idea.
It, it's not a huge issue, it's just, it just jumped out at me as
Okay.
trying to figure out what was going on there, so, but, but maybe, because I think your, your estimated ending balance is gonna be way off, but, but maybe you did make it up on your begin, estimated twenty-five beginning balance, that looks like it's probably a real number.
Mm-hmm.
So, that was my only thing, it's not a criticism, it's just a, was kind of a, what's going on here? But, no, I, I thought you did a very good job on, on your budget, and again, I, while the ambulance fund is you know, has had its issues, um, you know, the trustees obviously, you know, reduce collection of that, um, and, and you deserve a lot of credit for that, so I, I think you've been managing things very well.
Thank you. So, to go back to something Kristen, Chris, you said that there was a reserve fund set up for ambulance? Can you show that?
No. It says my note for two thousand twenty-two, we're going to create a hundred thousand dollars in our fund.
Okay, that, you did not do that.
They did not do that.
That's why that about, that's why the carryover balance is so high. So, that would be who viewed to do, because that will, that will then lower that carryover balance significantly.
But I think Chuck, I think what they're saying is they spent that money current year now.
Well
Because it got carried
This is as of twelve, this will be twelve thirty-one of two, twenty twenty-five.
Oh.
This will be their carryovers.
I don't think
It's gonna show two hundred and twenty-one percent carryover. So
Yes.
What, it's a, you, you predicted a high carryover in fire. I'm looking at
So when you say fire, you're actually talking ambulance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
But you're telling us that, that, that there's two hundred thousand that's gonna come out of there this year that's not reflected in these numbers?
Right, it's not reflected in your twenty twenty-five budget? In the, in the one you submitted to me? It should be, that's what, okay, that's
Well, then, yeah.
That's where that is.
Yeah, okay.
That, that would make sense to me, that, that, that's where it appeared. But you're, you know, you have, you have very healthy carryover in general fund and in all of your road fund combined. And, and while, you know, the road fund, it's, it's a percentage, you gotta be careful, because smaller townships, the, the number changes, it's higher, it's a higher percentage, but low numbers. So I would recommend that you at least look at pockets of reserve funds to be able to squirrel some money away, so that you don't get into a opposite problem coming in with too low a carryover that can't sus, can't sustain life. So I think we need to make sure Chris doesn't have issue with the number being too high in carryover, but you can help yourself by moving it into a reserve.
Okay.
So if you have additional money and you say, you know, we, we may need it in three or four years, then put it in a reserve fund.
Okay.
You know, kind of squirrel it away. All right? Otherwise, I have, there's no issues, thank you for submitting.
Is it, is it mine? I think so.
Yep.
Okay. Yep. Yeah, move to approve.
I'll second, and we
Uh, yes.
Yes, we just got a question.
It's too late, we approved your budget.
Okay. Sorry, never mind.
No, you can ask.
Never ask a question after the budget is approved. That we have a project, we have a property that we may have to do demolition on.
Yeah.
And how does that affect our funds? I mean, I, you take it, it's gonna come out of the general fund.
How much, well, how much money are we talking?
We don't, we don't have an estimate yet, we're still in kind
Well, you've got enough
With the
You've got enough cash left over in your general fund, you may wanna just use that additional cash, provided it's within your resources.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm assuming it's just, it's a township property or
Yes.
Part of the general fund.
Right on the edge of village.
And the village is
I had the county come out and expect that maybe all the structures unsafe and uninhabitable.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you live in Georgia, they've been in there for fifteen, twenty years.
Do it.
Oh, so it's somebody else's property that you're gonna have to do, then you'll have to plow through Jim's office to try to recover all the
Where we try to get
Yeah, you could use, I would use general fund, it'll, it'll go back into the general fund.
Okay.
Um, if you have anybody who, um, had property damage in the storm and complains to you, they can submit an application for assistance in reducing their property values
Okay.
to reduce their tax loan for a one-year period by using that form.
Okay.
Okay, um, if, if you, if anybody does complain, you can always send them to us, or you can just provide them that form, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay.
What's the value of their property?
Huh?
What's the value?
I don't know what the value is, it's, uh, wasn't very high on the county website. But it was five acres, right on eighty-seven, right on the, right next to the village.
So all of the expense that you go to, to destroy it, will go on the tax duplicate?
Mm-hmm.
Unless you're able to get a grant.
Thank you.
And then, uh, you think it'll be, that'll cost twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars. You think the property's worth that?
Probably, yeah.
Five acres.
So then
Five acres.
Sell.
Yeah.
And you will get that back out of the tax collection.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Out of the sale collection.
That'll be three years from now.
It's a, it's a quick one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It won't go to forefodder timeline.
No, it's paid for, and they've been paying the taxes, but they live in Georgia. So it's just a matter of, matter of taking the structures that are taken a proper safe.
Well, they, if they pay, if they're paying every year and they pay it, then they get a reward, or, within a year. Who would condemn it?
The building department, good.
Or, or a fire
They're gonna condemn it?
They deemed it unsafe and uninhabitable.
Okay, let's start. Yeah. So we'll just file. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good. We've done it before.
Yeah, yeah, I've been talking to Sheila.
Okay, good.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna real quick do Jagga Trumbull Solid Waste, she's got a meeting, she's gotta get, um, this is a real quick one, so we're
Yeah, we're gonna, we jinxed you, David.
We're gonna open the hearing for Jagga Trumbull Solid Waste District, uh, Tammy, can you go through the numbers, please?
Uh, Jagga Trumbull Solid Waste submitted their twenty twenty-five budget with beginning estimated balance in their general fund of three million eighty-four thousand seventy-six dollars and ninety-six cents. Requesting revenue in the amount of two million forty-seven thousand four hundred, which will be considered. Estimated expenses of two million six hundred and six thousand six ninety-nine, leaving an ending balance of two million five twenty-four seven seventy-seven and ninety-six cents. And then, they have no millage, and all their other funds are zeros.
Yeah, so this is how quick it's gonna be. No tax money used, Schedule AMB not required, thank you.
So lower, lower your rates enough to put a million dollars back?
You can't give it back, how you gonna get it back?
No, they're just Lower the rate. They're deficit spending, that's It'll take them, uh, six hundred
That's Possibly six to seven years.
Yeah.
To spend through all of our money, yes.
Yeah.
But the money is, the services that we provide are, we're unable to reduce some of them, and all, I mean, I'm gonna be
I'm not saying reduce services, I'm just saying reduce the price.
But it's really, really hard for us to change prices, we have to get it approved by si, by sixty-six percent of all the, all the communities in our districts, we have to go around to every single township, village, city, and ask them if we could do that.
They could just get more grants. And you've been doing that, right?
We've been writing a lot of
You did the camera grants for the, I mean, you did all kinds of stuff.
We, we write a lot of grants.
We put cameras inside the recycling bins, so they know when somebody opens up the garbage in it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And they keep trying to put your trash
That's cool.
And, and it tells us how full they are, so that I can see if the bins are full, and I can call the company and say, can you go service?
It's really just to find out
Bainbridge is overflowing.
It's really to find out when Chris puts something in.
Yes, and it's gonna make little noises, that one doesn't do it.
Does it tell when I'm putting Styrofoam in that cardboard in?
It'll tell me that, but it won't, it'll, it won't make any noises to you, but it lets me know. So that I get, so we can design education and send it, like, if we see that there's a problem with Styrofoam in Bainbridge, I can send a postcard out to every resident in Bainbridge and say, please don't put Styrofoam in my bins.
Chris.
That kind of thing.
I would be stronger.
We would say, but, but in a firm way, or, you know, or we'll be prosecuted, but anyway.
Who's motion?
Uh, my, uh, someone.
Second.
Yes.
You're doing a great job.
That's why I know you have all the money to get that machine to this whole estate.
He wants just a squishy Styrofoam machine, we do take foam in our collection facilities, you're welcome to bring it to the one on Merritt Road. We'll take the hard, the cooler foam, we could take it there and recycle it, just as an add-on.
Some shirts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. I just got some furniture over the weekend, I have to haul in the Styrofoam, just gotta go.
You could bring it to Merritt Road?
Thank you, it's very nice to see you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Auburn Township. Open the hearing for Auburn Township, uh, Tammy, should you start here?
Auburn Township submitted their twenty twenty-five budget, uh, with a beginning estimated balance in their general fund of seventy thousand one sixty-eight eighty-seven, requesting revenue in the amount of one million three hundred and eighty thousand one oh six. The Budget Commission will consider one million three seventy-six six eighty-five. Estimated expenses of one million four oh eight six sixteen, leaving an ending balance of thirty-eight thousand two thirty-seven eighty-seven cents. Road and Bridge, beginning balance of three hundred and eleven thousand one thirty-seven ninety cents. Requesting revenue in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand one fifty, which will be considered. Estimated expenses of one million five ninety-two eight hundred, leaving an ending cash balance of negative three hundred and six thousand five twelve and ten cents. Fire Fund, beginning estimated balance of three hundred and eighty-nine thousand five eighteen forty-one. Requesting revenue in the amount of one million three hundred and forty-one thousand four sixty-six, which we will consider. Estimated expenses of one million three hundred and twenty-four thousand one eighty-seven ninety-two, ending balance four hundred and six thousand seven ninety-six forty-nine. Um, they do have some debt, and then their total millage for twenty-four, twenty-five is three inside general, four outside Road and Bridge, And then their total millage for twenty-four, twenty-five is three inside general, four outside road and bridge, five point three outside fire for a total of twelve point three, and they do have an additional point six five mil road and bridge levy on for November.
Okay. So, how many people do you have to work for? Just road and bridge or road through or everybody? Everybody. About thirteen. How much do you spend in the one quarter pension? Hundred grand? A quarter? Three months. So, in the general fund, you have an estimated ending cash balance of forty-one thousand dollars. At two thousand twenty-five. Forty-one grand, you can't pay your people. At least, I don't think. So what you really need to do, you need to have a estimated ending cash balance of at least twenty percent of whatever monies are gonna be spent in that quarter. So I figured you gotta have two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of cash balance.
I should have done that first.
Why am I stealing the question?
Well, no, there, there's, there's, there's something going on in Auburn. It's all these numbers. Not, you can't use the numbers.
Well, one thing I can't say is my unencumbered balance right now, as of today, is two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And of that, ninety-five thousand is in contingencies, which I'm probably not gonna use. Our utilities are down due to the mild winter, our salaries and zoning are down. Um, I'm thinking that that beginning balance, carryover balance of January one of twenty twenty-five is gonna be well over two hundred bucks. In addition to what Chuck's gonna tell.
Tell him, yeah, Chuck? Because we can't do it unless we come to a meeting. He hasn't, maybe he can't read. Can I go first?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, can you pop up the PowerPoint? So, as you know, what's that?
Estolubis now.
Yeah, estolubis now. Um, Auburn has to remediate the collection of two, two years on the road.
Three.
Three years.
Three years.
Three years on a road levy that has been deemed to be ill unlawfully passed on the ballot, which is what it costs them in the neighborhood of about eight hundred thousand dollars, eight to nine hundred dollars.
Well, I thought that included.
I thought that was the interest. What was the final number?
At the time of seven hundred and fifty.
Seven cents plus interest.
I love it.
Well, and we don't know when the interest stops until, until the month before the day that the warrants go, right? Let's just see.
All right.
So seven fifty.
That's it.
That money has to come out of either the road fund or the general fund. But it can't come out of any other fund. So consequently, you can't review, I mean, I, there's no way I can do the math on his numbers. Because until we collect the money and grab it on the fund that we collect the money off of, he never's gonna see it. So his revenue is of no value right now. We don't know what his real revenue is gonna be in January, even though we're certifying this amount, we're gonna grab it before he ever gets it. So he's gotta be really conservative with what he predicts because he can only control expenditures. He can't control revenue. And until we resolve that and, and the dust settles, Dan's in cleanup mode. He's just cleaning up the boats because they were a mess. And so I concluded, I can't say anything until it's done. I, I mean.
Like, well, my issue is that you, you have a three hundred and six thousand dollar deficit in your road bridge. That's what you're, you budgeted. And even if your levy passes, you're only gonna bring in two sixty-two. So if your levy passes, you still I think.
Budget had, had transferred inside millage back to the general fund. So the budget is not reality.
Okay, that's why.
He ran into a.
No, whatever, we're here. Well, we haven't, we haven't approved that change. Exactly. We're rescinding that.
He's rescinding it because we now reinterpreted the O R C to say it has to come out of the fundage benefit.
But I guess, my only criticism is, I would have I would have drastically reduced your estimated expense in your road bridge fund until you knew what was going on. Could always add road projects, but I just think it was to say, well, we're just gonna spend one point seven million dollars again, you know, or one point six million dollars out of our road bridge. Well, no, you have to give all this money back and you don't know if your levy's gonna pass. So I, I that's my only criticism is, you, you should have drawn that way down and you wouldn't have this problem.
I had appropriated, our road and bridge costs normally come after the, in the second half of the year. Okay, I had appropriated eight hundred and seventy-five thousand for our road projects this year, twenty-four. As it turned out, with our OPWC grant, it's about four hundred and ten thousand less. So that money's gonna carry over.
Yeah, but you, you don't know your levy's gonna pass and you need to pay back all that money, so.
Correct. And that levy's not included.
I, I just wouldn't have budgeted one point six million dollars to spend in your road bridge fund because you're spending money you might not have.
Well, I think you does have to budget the expenditure for payment.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That is where it's coming from.
I don't think that's in here.
It, it has to be in there. You're taking that money.
It's in the general.
Yeah, right now it's in the general.
But we're, well.
But that's what I'm saying, though, they shouldn't, they shouldn't have budgeted it in the road.
Like I said, the budget submitted is not aligned with what's happening.
I understand. How, how is it the estimated revenue is one point four million dollars?
In, in what?
The general. In the gen, it more than double.
Because all of the inside millage got transferred.
Yeah.
By resolution, but we haven't approved it.
And then the estimated expenditure will be one point four million dollars, including eight hundred thousand dollars remediation. So the actual expenditure of cash services for your taxpayers will be about six hundred thousand dollars, that could be taken.
Less the seven fifty, yes, is a bit. The one point four less the seven fifty.
Yeah, that makes sense up there.
And we haven't contracted with anybody on that road and bridge project. We had a one million dollar plan to reset, reconstruct and resurface.
A subdivision.
Subdivision that fell apart, which is gonna cost us one million dollars. But we.
Can't do it.
That's not on the, that's not in your budget anyway, so that's, well, it's in the budget.
It is.
That's why they have one point six million budgeted for road and bridge. But they've always been spending over a million dollars in the past twenty years. Except for two thousand and ten.
Except for this year, next year.
This year it was, for two thousand twenty-five, it went down by
Four hundred.
Five, five hundred thousand dollars. Is that because of levy?
They, no, because they, the bids came in much cheaper than we anticipated.
No, the revenue is coming down. It's because they transferred the inside millage.
Yeah. Inside, they used to be inside millage.
So those, so inside millage goes up to general fund, but your expenditures did not diminish whatsoever. I think that's what Mr. Flay's point is.
Correct.
So that's why you're.
But now it's a moot point because we're gonna keep the revenue in the road and bridge.
But then that expense is gonna shift down. I, I guess, you're not going to bid out these projects till next year. So if you don't have the money.
We don't do it.
Okay, that's fair.
I think that's, that was, that's the concern, right? You don't want to obligate more than me.
Yeah, I mean, according to their budget, that's what they're doing.
In our five-year plan, that million-dollar project and subdivision was for twenty-five, but obviously, we don't think we're gonna be able to do that.
Yeah, can we even approve a, a million budget?
Yeah, we can because it's not real.
We generally do that. I feel so good about that.
I don't, but it's not real.
Then.
The inside millage transfer was not approved, so we have to mechanically change that.
Do you wanna do like table it until tomorrow and we can run numbers once we?
Yeah, I think we should alter their budget.
We should also, okay.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
I, I agree with that.
You don't have to come back. We'll just make your changes. You want your books to be as close as you can. I mean, you've got a lot of cleanup to do with other stuff as well. I mean.
I, I just wanna say, Dan has done a yonkers job of helping clean this, this up. When I came on after a sixteen-year hiatus, the first call I got the day after the election was from the state of Ohio saying our fiscal officer hadn't redone any reports for a year, over a year. And when I went to him and asked him, he says, I'll have it done next week. Two weeks later, I got a call, same call from the guy in Columbus, nothing was done, and obviously, the sad ending, you guys are already aware of, but I don't know how he even operated for the last three years with what he was doing or wasn't doing.
So Dan, you've done a great job. You really have.
He has.
All the issues. I mean, you, you really.
Yeah, I, I just don't think we have enough.
So I think what we'll do is, we'll table it, we'll rerun the numbers and just adjust your budget and then give it to you with the, the inside millage. You, yeah, you're gonna, we still, that's still tabled. We, we could just.
We're not gonna act on it. They reversed it.
You already did.
Tonight. So we, we need to have their budget down.
We could just vote no.
You guys can, can, can you fix their budget for them?
Yeah, cuz, and we're moving seven fifty, right, from expenses in general fund down to.
Down to, well, actually, no, because he's already accounting for some road projects that we don't think he should account for. Right? You're not gonna go offer bids on those projects until you don't get the money.
Right.
Right. So they're, they're not real expenditures. So let's just, let's just get rid of the expenditure in the general fund. Move the revenue down and let's see if that balances the equation, should.
Yeah, cuz we, we can't change expenses.
We can, we can.
We could change it because of this, but yeah.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
We'll fix it and we'll send you a copy.
Okay, I move with table.
Okay, I'll second.
Yes.
Yes.
No one, no one, can you put that back up?
Yeah. The.
My chart.
That.
Cuz you had Fund Twenty, ARPA carryover in the.
Yeah, so you're showing some carryover in the ARPA fund after twenty twenty-five. You lose it after December of twenty twenty-five.
I know, but as, as long as I have it, we have it scheduled by the end of this year.
Obligated.
Yeah.
Yeah, obligated. So we have to obligate it this year, you know, if, if we're not gonna spend.
This is at the end of twenty-five.
Has to be spent by the end of twenty-five.
Yeah, but it doesn't get obligated by the end of this year. It's not as easy as it sounds.
Well.
What are you gonna obligate it for?
Well, I don't know. They're looking at a restroom project and I mean, I mean.
Yeah, you gotta have the, you'd have to have a bid.
To obligate it.
Yeah, to then.
Um.
Well, we'll have to, I mean, there's a number of things we could spend it on.
Yeah.
We should use those pickleball courts. I think we can even use it for salaries.
You can, for safety forces. Well, actually, for.
For any general government.
General government.
That's your safest bet?
Yeah, just to get.
I'd start paying all your road guys out of there for the rest of the year.
To pass a resolution.
Yeah. But you pay your road guys to start making that money in road.
Out of the ARPA fund?
Yeah. You gotta pay it out of that fund, though.
Okay.
You can't transfer.
Right.
Okay.
But that would be, then you're, then all that money, you're essentially just banking it for next year in your road fund, which is where you need it.
There you go.
But yeah, call, call Chrissy and
Yeah.
We'll, we'll give you, there's a standard resolution that we have.
I'm glad I asked.
Yeah.
How much is it? How much money is it?
Twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-four thousand.
Oh, so that's a piece of cake. You could spend that on your road.
Yeah, twenty-four thousand.
Yeah, the county kinda got the jackpot because they waited to run, so.
Yeah, not the turtle.
But you'll, you won't have a problem.
Then the other two questions I have, just Fund Thirty-two oh one and Thirty-two oh two, I didn't know what they, where did they, what, what's that, what is that? What are they?
I don't know. They were, they were there. There was no balances. I just didn't, I just didn't include them. There's nothing, we're gonna use them for.
So there's no money in them?
No.
Okay.
Cuz you had asked that last year.
Yeah. I, I know, but.
So I just didn't show it.
Checking.
Oh, got it.
I, I, certain things I asked Fred several times and I just wanted to make sure that it was holding true.
Okay, well, thank you.
Good.
I, I, I just wanna say that I really appreciate the assistance, guidance and encouragement you chart, Kristen Sinatra and Tammy Most have given me in the last eight months. I, I don't think I could have gotten through without it. There's been a lot of other help.
You reverse.
Yeah.
And, and Chrissy Ryan, she's been really helpful too.
Oh, we're good. That's nice.
Well, I, I, you know, you're, you were put in a very bad situation and it could have gone one of two ways. And fortunately, it's going the right way. Like, I mean, I've seen this happen where it got worse before it got better. And I, you know, no one, we wanna do everything we can to make you succeed.
And thank you.
It takes a group effort.
Thanks.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, take care.
All right.
All right.
We'll be in touch. We'll let you know what happens tomorrow.
Okay.
Not all of a sudden, you're hanging over something.
I'm, I'm usually being called a staple gun. I did get a jab in on it.
I did, but I, I.
Sounds water, we got it.
I told PJ, I said, he, he got you.
I got it.
Okay, thank you.
See ya.
Yeah.
Can I go? No.
I don't want anywhere.
What else do we have? You can go after this next one.
County.
You can take a rest of the day off.
Yeah.
Hi, Adrian.
Hello.
Okay, we're gonna open the hearing for the Jagga County budget. Can you uh read the numbers, Tammy?
Okay, Jagga County submitted their twenty twenty-five budget with a beginning estimated balance in their general fund of four hundred and, four million five hundred and fifty-one thousand two sixty-five thirty-four. They requested revenue in the amount of forty-seven million two eighteen sixty-five. The budget commission will consider forty-seven million two twenty-three six seventy-four and estimated expenses of forty-six million nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. And an ending balance of four million seven hundred and eighty-six thousand seven oh nine thirty-four. Total millage for twenty-four, twenty-five, two point five inside general, two point five outside road and bridge, one point two outside children's services, one point two outside mental health, four point three DD, one outside senior citizens, point two outside health district for a total of twelve point nine, and then two point two four mills is included on their certificate from the library for a total of fifteen point one four mills. And levies on the ballot?
J F S.
J F S. That's a renewal.
Yep.
And then the other, um, the other J F S and the senior citizens one will probably go on in the spring of next year. Cause those are both up in twenty twenty-four. So there are elections, so you're gonna pay for an election? You think that they're just the, the regular primary in the spring? I don't believe there's a primary. Oh, there isn't? And pre-show, that was what their plan was. Twenty-five. Is that what, okay, there's no pressure. I didn't know if there was a, if there's always a spring one and always a fall one. Okay, now you'd have to pay, that's, that would, that'd be expensive. You'd have to pay to hold the election. Okay, we'll, we'll make them aware of that. The only one I know of that's been given the go-ahead right now is that half-mill J F S study.
You can go, I can go.
Go to PowerPoint.
Going to go?
Yeah.
Can you call it up? So the, I guess, I reviewed last year's budget, the audio from the budget hearing. And, and maybe I missed where this was submitted, but I think it was Treasure Hitchcock asked for a timeline of capital projects, an update to the timeline with, with, with accurate dollar amounts placed on them.
I have a five-year plan.
And this was, this was specifically from last year's budget going into this year. This was this was specifically from last year's budget going into this year. And I I've never seen it. Have you guys got? You never got it? So that, I mean, that, I mean, we haven't talked about what's on the forecast, but that that's a concern to me cuz one of the items was, I believe it was stated, the office renovations on the square were in architectural phase. And we said, well, what what does that mean?
Does it be for like the annex and phase two of the courthouse and stuff like that?
I just I'm listening to the audio.
Okay.
Office renovation on the square. And.
I don't have anything new on that.
Well, with the probably, we didn't have anything last year either.
Right.
So I mean, that that's that's my my concern is we're not moving the ball down the field. We're we're kinda still in the not sure what we're doing, what the money is being accrued in the various funds for. You know, I I think I think there was improvement made by the county in moving the budget hearings for the departments and for the elected offices prior to this year, because normally it's on after. And our argument was, well, you can't change the budget once it's submitted. But again, this year, after after all of the departments went in and pled their case and made their arguments and addressed all the questions from the papers, then the budget was changed. It was when you did your final submission, you know, various items were just slashed again with no communication that I know. And the issue I have is it's like people just keep having to go back in and ask for the same thing and taking the same arrows. So what's what's the point? I don't understand the point of the hearing, if it's just arbitrarily gonna be changed anyway.
Well, there there is a hearing. We have a budget presentation that we do for the public.
Right.
Where we detail the adjustments that we've made.
Yeah, but there's no dialogue with the with commissioners as to.
There's no budget hearing. We come in, we talk to you, and then it's never discussed in a public hearing and drastic changes are made to what occurred at the hearings.
Well, the budget is heard in a in a public hearing. I attended.
The decisions are made behind closed doors.
Yeah, there was no. There were no questions by the commissioners as to which items were being cut and how, what method was used to determine what the cut should be. It it was just.
Well, there was a there was a budget hearing recap meeting that we did where we went over several things that could be cut, several options that they had. I have those presentations here if you'd like to see them. I believe you were at those as well. Where we had the graphs of where everybody expenses, everybody's expenses were going, what the the revenue and expenses looked like. So I mean, there there were many cuts that were determined at that time, including equipment, personnel, contract services, all kinds of things that were proposed that the commissioners considered. And some of those some of those cuts that I had recommended in the meeting were, in fact, done. And it was a unanimous decision by the commissioners to approve the budget that was before them.
Yeah, but I think there's a semantics issue here. I agree that there was a unanimous decision by the commissioners to approve the budget. I don't recall any discussion or vote by the commissioners on which item should be cut. There was there was a bunch of recommendations thrown out, and then there was a final presentation of the budget with cuts in. But there's no connection between that meeting and the final budget. It was, I don't know how that was done.
There were individual meetings that were done with the commissioners where I.
Well, that that's the problem.
Called a round robin. Not a lot. I don't know.
It just seems, Adrian, that if you're gonna cut an elected or department head's budget, they should at least have the courtesy of knowing what you're cutting so they can make the plans according. I mean, you you cut four hundred some thousand dollars of capital out of an account and which items did you cut?
I I have a list if you'd like to see.
Well, it'd be nice to know because we can't be buying those things, right? We don't have the money to buy.
When I communicate that the budget's been approved, there are instructions I sent out for the departments to be able to print out.
But that's after they decided to hack them. That's after they agreed we're gonna cut this stuff out. What if it were, you know, something that we absolutely have to have? And they've elected to cut it.
I don't think that I don't. I don't think that the point is that it gets cut and then we'll never go back in.
Well, why do we?
Once it's cut.
Why do we bother to present those items at our hearings if we're not gonna be funded anywhere? Until we come back and present them again.
Everything's not not funded. Some things are funded and some things are not. And then then once we know we have the money, once the money is there and we're able to verify that we can afford those things, then requests can be made either at a supplemental or some other financial layer on it.
Why would you cut G I S money?
Um, I believe the only G I S money that was cut was a maintenance worker that you had budgeted in your budget.
Yeah, why would you cut G I S money?
It's not yet. We didn't consider it to be G I S money. We considered it to be a maintenance person.
It's funded through G I S.
I understand.
Commissioners have no authority over that fund. How under what? How did you cut it? Well, it doesn't affect the county's budget one iota. That fund is my authority, my duty to protect and my duty to spend.
The commissioners had an issue, I believe, with the fact that you were trying to hire your own maintenance staff.
Because we can't get things fixed.
I don't think that's true. Oh, my God.
You wanna hear it running right now or you want me to point it out to you? We can't have meetings without two microphones because the air conditioner sings so loud.
Are you gonna? You're not hiring an HVAC person?
We're hiring a maintenance person. It needs throttled. It needs a different a different blower motor.
And that person's gonna know how to do that. Light bulb out in my office for a year that I can't get changed. There's light bulb. Half the light bulbs in my hallways are.
The point is, it's G I S money. It's not commission money. And I don't see any legal ability for you guys to cut it.
Chuck, you know, Chuck already pays to have the the the.
I have cleaned it up.
He has a cleaning crews come in.
He's cleaning the front lobby because it wasn't being locked.
I hiring hiring a contractor, I guess, to do it isn't as big of a deal as hiring.
I don't think it. I don't think you guys have a say in that. I really don't. You should go argue with the tax commissioner cuz that's the person I have to I have to answer to. G I S money is a protected fund. It's not available for the commissioners to hack away at.
I don't think. I think your description of hacking away at is erroneous.
Well, what do you call when you change somebody else's fund?
You were trying to hire a maintenance person and the commissioners took issue with that, so. Did they? I've never heard that discussed in a meeting. How do I know that? That was a round robin meeting. That's what I was told. Oh.
Well, I'll tell you what, Ben. I'm a no vote on your budget and I'll file a complaint with the tax commissioner because you have no authority to change that budget. You've never changed it before.
I never have. You're right.
There's never a history in this county of changing.
This is the first time you've ever tried to budget your own maintenance staff.
If you provide me the services that we need in this office, I wouldn't have to do that. My job's to keep this office running.
I understand.
I mean, there was.
These buildings are falling apart. Your stanchion is required to provide us suitable space. The opera house is just an embarrassment. You have money and funds.
Well, it was in architectural phase last year. I've never seen any architectural study. I've never seen any action on anything. The the two submissions that were put through by maintenance to do repairs on the space was denied by the commissioners. And then you deny me the ability of hiring somebody to make the repairs. I'm gonna catch twenty two.
So did they cut? Didn't they cut existing personnel, funds for existing personnel?
A D P.
Is that you've cut funds for existing personnel?
Quarter mil.
These are people who are currently working for the county. No, this was not currently working for the county. This was funds that were over three percent that the commissioners had approved as far as um wage increases that were in A D P. One of the things that I went through is I went through all the departments and what their increases in payroll were. And A D P was one of the few, including maintenance and common pleas, that were way over three percent.
Were there any in juvenile probate court?
No.
There were no increases above.
I'm not saying.
There were no increases above the three percent in juvenile probate?
I would have to look and see.
There were.
Well, we can look.
Did juvenile probate even go to their budget hearing?
They did not have a budget hearing.
Did they submit a budget?
They submitted their revenue, but not their expenses. Which has been something that I've had to deal with.
And nothing was.
Ever since I've been working.
And nothing was cut from their budget.
I have not cut anything yet, no.
Well, you can't cut now. You've already submitted the budget.
Right. No, and and that's pretty much one I'm gonna tell Kim when she goes to submit it is that we're just gonna have to wait until next year and do it again.
But anything they had submitted went through. Anything they submitted went through unchanged.
It was basically whatever the twenty twenty four adopted budget was.
Which had already been, which had already had increases.
I don't believe. I I don't know what the increases were from twenty three to twenty four. I I don't.
So you're telling me that eighty the two hundred and fifty thousand for A D P only represents additional personnel costs above the three percent raise on.
So A D P's payroll for the twenty twenty four amended budget was one point two zero nine million dollars. This includes all the money that was transferred over for um archives, okay? The twenty twenty five tax budget request for A D P was one point four five million dollars. This was an increase over the twenty twenty four amended of nineteen point eight five percent. The savings, if we cap that at a three percent, which would give you one point two four six million on the over the one point two zero nine million, it would save the county two hundred and three thou- almost two hundred and four thousand dollars. So the decision had been made to limit the increase in A D P at the three percent cap. Common pleas went up sixteen percent. Maintenance went up twenty nine point eight eight. And the prosecutor went up twelve point one one. I indicated to them, common pleas was having a change in in the judgeships and that there were some overlap on some positions due to there being some retirements that were happening. And then the prosecutor was taking over municipal prosecution. So those were the two ones that basically had a a very reasonable explanation for the increases. The two departments that we took action on to reduce was maintenance and A D P.
So the twenty twenty four, your estimated twenty twenty three ending balance is three hundred and forty one thousand. Your actual was eleven point seven million. So you carried that forward. Your estimated beginning balance of twenty twenty four was seven point six million. And you've actually uh have an estimated ending balance of seven point five million. But then you've estimated your beginning balance of twenty twenty five at four point five million.
I'm not sure exactly how the spreadsheet works for you guys, but the beginning balance is always what the unappropriated balance is of the current year. So that's just the unappropriated balance for the current year.
I think he's talking about the ending balance variance.
Yes, yeah.
It's off by um eleven point four million in twenty three. It's off by ten point one million dollars in twenty two. And it was off by by nine million, eight million, eight million, eight in twenty one. It was off by twelve million before that, ten million before that. It hasn't been even close for decades. This is the same argument in con- in conversation we had a year ago.
It it started getting better and then it seems like you you retreated from that. So I guess my other issue is, so you're you're estimating your beginning balance on January first is gonna be four point five million dollars. Can we all agree that that's low, less than half of what it's actually gonna be?
Absolutely.
Okay, so how am I supposed to square that? You you you're presenting an estimate to us. You're presenting a budget and and you're agreeing right off the bat that it's at least off by a hundred percent.
That's the system that I've been given. Um, I did indicate to the budget commission that I had an issue with this and and how we could rectify it and some um thoughts that I had about it. Ron, you know, checked with me on some options that he thought we might have. They did not pan out. Um, at a meeting not all that long ago, I was basically told there were no recommendations from the the budget commission. And I was told uh in in my budgeting to keep it within the calendar year revenue, so it is what you see before you.
Here's the other problem. I mean, unless I'm wrong, Chuck will tell me if I'm wrong. Aren't we gonna be? Don't we have to add ten million dollars to that because we're taking the ARPA funds and we're paying salaries with it till the end of the year? So that's all gonna translate into general fund.
No, it's it's gonna get moved over to or should be. That's what the plan is with Ron is that gets moved over into the capital reserve fund.
No, it's not. Can't get moved over until it's there.
So you're gonna move it to the ca- you can't move it to the capital reserve fund till January.
You can't. You're you're trying to move appropriated money outside of the county's general fund into a capital reserve fund before it appears in the county's general fund. It doesn't appear in the county's general fund until January first.
Well, then I guess I'll have to move it January first. So January first, you're probably.
You're gonna have ten more million dollars.
You're gonna have, you're probably gonna have twenty million dollars January first. Well, probably more than that. And then you're gonna move ten million right away to the capital reserve fund.
I guess my my um impression, and I've had a conversation with Ron about this as well, that as those expenses are diverted to the uh ARPA fund, that we would be able to transfer that money into the capital reserve fund.
Well, how? I mean, how you can.
Just by transferring.
What conversation?
I don't know that that was.
You've appropriated those funds to the various.
A lot of corrupt officials. But as they do not utilize those funds and then come out of our fund.
That works.
It it'll it'll get.
I can't. I can't move appropriations out of the salary counts?
Money.
Not once it's appropriated by the commissioners.
Money appropriated outside the county general fund becomes the the fund in which it's appropriated to until January first occurs and those monies are sucked back into the general fund as carryover. That's how it works. You wanna grab it before it's sucked back. It's that's not how that works.
The problem is all of our budgets are gonna show a huge unexpendited.
Carryover.
Carryover.
Salaries.
Salaries, yeah. And which are then gonna hit the general fund January first. So that that's what I'm saying. Your cash carryover January first is gonna be like twenty million dollars from in the general fund because it's gonna roll all those salaries.
It's gonna be four thousand, seven hundred dollars.
So it's four. It's four million.
Oh, four million seven. I'm sorry.
No, no, he's got four point five million is the, well, we've agreed that's probably half of what it really is. I think it's maybe less than half. So figure you're gonna have ten million plus that ten million. That's what I'm saying. You're gonna have, it's gonna be twenty million dollars. Now, you sounds like you're gonna immediately move that over to the capital reserve fund, right?
Yeah.
I I I'm just saying that of all the budgets we've heard all morning, none of those entities require the budget commission to tell them how they align their cash balances that they're predicting with their actuals. That that's their job to do. Our job is to determine whether their budget reflects accurately their need. And and that's that's the that's the equation that we've never been able to align on. You you there has never been a year going back in this entire history where the county even came close anything closer than ten times the amount that they predicted was their actual.
Again, and I've told you guys over and over again why that is, and you have offered zero solutions.
Well.
I mean, I I've heard a lot of people come in here and say how wonderful it is to work with the auditor's office and I I really enjoy working with everybody in your office. But as far as this commission, you guys have given me zero help on trying.
Because you already have. You have your. You already have your mind made up of how you're gonna do it. And I'm not here just to pass it.
I don't. I don't have my mind made up.
Well, you've already told me how you go about cutting things in a vacuum.
It's not a vacuum.
I I beg to differ with you. I would. I've been going to commissioner meetings now most of this year, simply so I don't miss what's discussed. I I I was never. I've never been asked, Chuck, we have a problem. Um, there's some salaries that need to be cut with A D P. Is that gonna present a problem?
I.
I Chuck, there's some there's some capital that's gonna be cut.
Last year I did do that when I was making adjustments. And either they were communicated and you guys ignored them or they weren't communicated. I don't know what happened. But there was no feedback from you guys either.
Well, who's approving the tax budget? Did you you make up the budget and then those guys with no discussion, no deliberation?
There wasn't a question asked.
No.
There was no. There were no questions from the commissioners.
So.
There was a question from Diane Jones. She asked more questions.
Rubber stamps. Is that what it is?
So either that means they already knew what was going on or they have no idea what is going on.
No, they individually, they they had an understanding of what they wanted. And then when I communicate that in the meeting, they determine whether that's what they were expecting or not. And they have, it's completely within their rights to to make a modification.
It is, but it should also be done in the eye of the public.
That's what that was.
No, it wasn't cuz you said they. No, it wasn't because you said they individually make their determination.
If all the discussions happen behind closed doors.
You guys are not making any determination?
No, we don't.
No. What your own ideas are about something?
We do it here in the meeting. That's why we have three different presentations. You, if you've watched any of these hearings, we each.
I watch them all. I've been watching.
We each have our own different approach to things. I don't know if Chris is going to vote.
You know what you're going to ask? You can't tell me you don't know that.
I, I don't understand your question.
So this morning is the first time you looked at any of this stuff coming in here.
But I'm, but I.
That's what they do too.
The difference is I didn't communicate that to anybody so that they could alter the records. If I say, for example, Auburn Township, we're going to change their budget. Have I, did I talk to either of you before this meeting saying we're going to change Auburn's budget? No.
I understand.
Did my math show we're going to have to change Auburn's budget? Yes. But until we have the public debate, until the three of us agree by two to one at least that we're going to do it, we can't make that decision. And the public has a right to see that process. And if they disagree with the process, they have a right to say something. Right now, the public has no idea if one commissioner agrees or disagrees, or any of them agree or disagree.
Yeah, I don't know who, which, which commissioners agreed to cut ADP's budget? I don't know. All of them, I guess, because they rubber stamped what you did.
Yes. Okay. If you want to call it rubber stamp, that's your.
Well, when you present something and there's no questions and no public discussion or deliberation and they just approve it, I would characterize that as a rubber stamp. Yes. Well, I mean, these, the, the, the numbers are just, they're, they're ridiculous. I mean, I can't. The, the, the estimated beginning balance is just, it's way off.
You're right.
Way off.
Yep. Okay, well.
Could, could that not be ameliorated by taking some of that, uh, cash and giving it back to the taxpayers?
Sure. We can do that. I'm sure that the commissioners would, uh, um, support that if it can be, um, paid for.
Well, it appears as, as Jim has pointed out, you said in 2023, you're only going to have 341,000 dollars. You got almost 12 million bucks. I mean, could, could 6 million dollars be given back to the taxpayers?
Show me a method by which we could do that and I'll give it to the commissioners and have them decide.
Just don't, don't collect on let's.
What's this, what's the schedule of, what's this, I mean, we wanted the, the building improvement schedule. I mean, what's going on with all these projects we keep hearing about? I mean, where are they at? What, what, what's the timeline? The youth center, is that in the budget?
Yes, that's, that's in the.
JFF's budget, 6 million dollars.
The, the senior center, that's still in the budget?
It's still in the budget right now, yeah.
How much is in there for the senior center?
Um, it's a separate fund. It's about 1.9 million dollars.
Selected by a levy?
No, that was from the sale of the old senior center and a cash transfer from the, uh, department on aging.
Yeah, they have a, they have a building fund that they've squirreled away the money in.
So the commissioners have to provide the electeds with offices. The indication last year was that you have an architect preparing some, uh, if not drawing some schemes for these spaces. What's the name of the architect or the firm?
TDA was the one that was, uh, being utilized for all the phase two stuff.
Are they continuing to work on that project?
As far as the courthouse and the youth center and that, yes, but we haven't.
Right here where we are right now.
That, that they have not started anything with regards to design for these, these areas yet. They have to go through a whole preliminary plan.
Testimony was last year that that process had begun.
Overall process for phase two had begun, yes. It included these offices.
Is there anybody working on renovation or updating the spaces?
There are nothing currently, no.
Okay. Is there any expectation?
Yes.
In the next year, two years, five years?
Expectations within the next year, the two, year to two years. For drawings, for working on whatever upgrades would need to be done. With what's in that, what's in this building.
There is expectation to retain the opera house? Are we going to get rid of that?
That's yet to be completely determined. That may be, you know, that maybe we, the commission may be going back to look at the chase building at some point. I don't know.
There's a lot of.
That certainly wasn't talked about in public.
Yeah, I've never heard that.
Frankly, I'm disappointed that my office has not been included in any of those conversations. My little team works very hard to collect taxes. We are very good handed. We are collecting over 100% of taxes due because of some reduced delinquencies. If I keep promising them, there is going to be more appropriate office space for us in the future. I hope that will happen in the very near future. I would encourage you to have commissioners reach out to those of us that are in this old building to discuss our future accommodations.
So I think, I think the, uh, the original idea was to have you on the ground floor of the chase building. But that, that fell through. So that's what the original plan was, but.
The idea is wonderful, but.
Yeah.
The only buildings on the square that are in worse shape than your building and or our building, any of the county buildings might be the chase building.
It, it just seems ironic that there's now a two, two to three year forward looking plan to even start to consider doing something with these buildings, but yet everyone's compelled with canceling a maintenance person to maintain that I'm willing to pay for on GIs. That, that, that's the part I don't get. It's, it's unheard of that I should hire a maintenance person to maintain a building that's falling apart. But the plan to fix it is at least two years on before we even start to think about it. What are we doing in the meantime? If you, if you don't want to do it, then, and you don't want me to do it, then what do we do? You talk about helping each other. Help comes when somebody wants to take advice. It's not when they want to just cherry pick advice. So case in point, my recommendation to the commissioners over a year ago was to convert the ARPA 10 million dollars and spend it on salves specifically for the sheriff. And they would have burned it in a year. That money would have been gone and you would have already captured back the 10 million. But we waited until the 11th hour and then your office is bad mouthed the auditor saying he was messing around with the ARPA money. That's what Chrissy Blair was telling me. How am I messing around with ARPA money? You can't just transfer money out of ARPA. It doesn't work that way. So I guess you get what you reap what you sow. And my suggestion is if you want cooperation, start cooperating. But I'm not going to sit here and, and try to come up with solutions by using GIS money or, um, reef money or anything else to try to keep the four walls reasonable and open. And then we come in here and hear these plans into the future that probably are never going to happen. It's like, I, we heard this last year. There's, we're in the architectural stage. Show me the architecture stuff. Well, it wasn't included. Well, that wasn't said last year. Like I said, I re-listened to last year's hearing. And we were led to believe there is a plan and there's money attached to that plan. But I don't think that's true.
So, I mean, unfortunately you can't have all phases of something going at one time.
I get it, but you have to maintain what you have.
I understand.
Well, I've got residents coming in here every day. And I have to have certain things working. And if you're not going to do it as a body, then I am going to do it. But you've, you've, you've reduced my, a, a fund that you have no authority over and you're not providing the service. So, and you're not, there's no plan to actually fix it. But maybe in two years. You know, and yet your budget is not even aligned with what we all just agreed just now is going to be your ending balance by millions and millions of dollars. And, and, and your argument is you're not telling me how to fix it. I didn't, I, we haven't told Bainbridge how to fix it. We haven't told Auburn how to fix their, we, that's not our role. Our role isn't to fix your budget. Our role is to test it.
I wasn't asking you to fix it. I was asking you to give me a recommendation that could work for you better.
One way you could have, one recommendation I did give you that you guys ignored is a year ago, gentlemen, you used the ARPA money to pay for sheriff's salaries. You would now have a 10 million dollar balance sitting somewhere. Maybe in the general fund, maybe in a special fund. I don't know. But the budget would be better tuned to what reality is. And now it's not. So I, I, I can't help that, Adrian. You know, if commissioners choose to say anything that Walder or Flays recommends is not going to be considered. That's their decision. They'll blame me then for, for not following it. That is the consensus down there, which is fine.
All right, what, what are we doing? You're losing your breath. You're asking for accountability from an administrator who demands no accountability. So.
I'm a no vote on this budget. I cannot in good conscience vote other people's budgets to require better accountability.
Uh, I've moved to, I've moved to disapprove of the budget submission.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Yes.
Yes.
No.
Okay.
What's the next step then?
We'll review it, make some changes.
Okay. Thank you.
What other persons do we have?
Minutes from the 5th of August.
It's not even 3 o'clock.
It'll be fine.
Uh, August 5th meeting?
Yes.
So, chef?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 5th meeting minutes as.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, we got ready with this.
Kenston, amendment number one. Uh, they have a general fund total of 49,510,195.75. Special revenue, 2,537,9867. Debt service, 4,287,237.43. Capital project funds, 1,846,413.79. Enterprise funds, 1,972,572.99. Internal service, 10,036,465.56. And fiduciary, 74,009.3823 for a new uh, total of 69,009,781,622.42.
So, second, yes.
Yes.
Uh, we have amendment number eight for Bainbridge. Is that Bainbridge?
Yep.
Uh, new special revenue fund total is 19,326,922.96. New certificate total is 28,070,634.73 and appropriations do not exceed.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Uh, we have the county budget amendment number seven. This is, uh, 10 million dollars to the reserve phase two fund. Uh, capital project fund total, 39,837,581.61 cents. New certificate total, 247,038,852 cents.
So moved.
Isn't it that 10 million dollars?
Yep, so moved.
Second.
No.
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 Giaga Public Health amendment number three, general fund, uh, has a change to, uh, transfer in from, uh, six, fund 6002. New general fund total is 3,48,800.74 cents. New total certificate is 7,796,985 and 48 cents.
So moved. Second, yes.
All right.
Yes.
And they also have an appropriation request in the public health for a transfer out.
35,000. So moved.
Second.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, then we just have general discussion and public comment.
I'm, I'm discussed out. Public comment, you want to open it up for anybody who stayed on line?
So as has been pointed out, the $10,000 transfer they're trying, trying to do is already appropriated.
Yeah.
How, how can they submit?
Because we just make up new rules. It's like we can get rid of reef money.
They think, they think because they're giving us, they, they think because they're.
They're using ARPA money that they know there's going to be additional carryover and they want to capture it before the end of the year.
But I don't think legally they can do that.
No.
They've appropriated the money.
Yeah, we're just rewriting the rules of.
They, if they really wanted to do it properly, they would try to de-appropriate it, which they can't do because they've already approached. We would have to.
We would have to make it.
Yeah.
Well, actually, they, the difference is payroll is not encumbered that way. Payroll is a unique.
But they shouldn't have been able to just do a transfer.
Thinking.
Okay.
So why, do we know where that transfer was coming from? To all our funds, all the?
Yes, so.
All salaries.
The intention was, yeah, they were going to de-appropriate all the salary line items. Put it in the transfer, appropriate it, transfers out.
And what happens if we run out of ARPA money?
Transfer it to.
Yeah, I mean, here's, here's the thing, they hit.
It, it did go through the end.
It's not like they transferred the ARPA money to all of us either. They're, they're paying the salaries out of it.
The ARPA money does not pay everybody's pay through the end of the year.
Correct.
So at some point, we're going to run out of ARPA.
Yes.
And if they de-appropriate our salaries, we'll have to go and ask for supplemental appropriations at the end of the year, which is what they want us to do. So they can say, there you go, spending more money again. And it's a big shell game. It's not spending more money. It, it's, it's nonsense. It's total nonsense. Um, I'm sorry, Gail, did you have a question?
You have to unmute.
Yep, I did. Um, so I will send a request, but I'm asking for your slide presentation, Mr. Walder. And also are, uh, the budget numbers that were submitted, um, and approved?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Kim and Kristen, you've got the slides ready.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did you want to comment in the minutes referencing the, um, table resolution from Auburn, just to make a comment about the commission will wait for them to take action?
Yeah, so the, we did receive a request from Auburn to, um, change their inside mileage from Roman Bridge to the general fund. And then, uh, when I went and talked to them, um, the recommendation was leave it in Roman Bridge because you're going to need the money there. So they are, my understanding from talking to them today, their meeting is tonight.
Yeah.
And they're going to rescind that request. So I think we should just hang tight until the recension and then it will be brought back up and we will motion to not do it, I guess, is what we would do at that time. But we'll just leave it table for right now.
Well, hopefully he's going to scan it over to me when I talk to him. He was going to scan it to me. We can present it tomorrow. He'll accept it and then we can re-present numbers.
Okay. All right, fine.
So we won't have numbers tomorrow. We're just going to.
No, we will have numbers.
We will. If he does it tonight, we'll have them tomorrow.
Yeah, because we're going to, I've, I've already done.
Okay.
Okay. Any, anything else?
Anybody online?
Gail, sure you don't want to ask another question or something? Okay.
Thank you all.
So wait, we have, so tomorrow, yeah, we'll recess till tomorrow.
Resess.
So we've got to figure out, we've got to change Auburn's budget, but we'll wait till we hear from them tomorrow.
Right.
With them rescinding it. And then.
Chester.
Chester, what are we going to do with that?
You tell me. I, I, I voted yes because I was going to give them an opportunity to create reserve funds.
I wonder if they have a trustee meeting between now, yeah, but they got to have studies that they're not going to tell the great.
They said, somebody said they had hired. They said, s- somebody said they hired somebody. Didn't one of them say they hired? I I've referred so many.
I don't think it was Chester that said that.
Was not Chester?
I think that was.
It was Henry. Oh, new Barry. Okay. Why move we? I move we recess until.
Nine AM.
Nine AM tomorrow morning.
A second.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thanks, everybody.